Go ahead and get started. It's seven o'clock, so if everyone's ready, I'll call. This meeting of April 3rd, 2025 was Planning and Zoning Commission order. First thing we'll do here is roll call. Paige, can you help us with that?
David Larson.
Here.
John Meyer.
Here.
Donovan Spence-Cutler, Stephanie Garner.
Here.
David Huser.
Here.
Kate Payne.
Here.
Kathy Olson.
All right, so we have enough for quorum, so we'll go ahead and begin. First item on our main agenda here is the approval of tonight's minutes.
We have the agenda first.
That's what I meant to say, but I did not. Very good call. I read it and did not say it. Approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting, April 3rd, 2025.
I move that be approved as printed.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Hearing none opposed, that motion passes. Item D on our agenda was, what I meant to say, approval of minutes from our February 6th, 2025 meeting.
I do have a question, and I think it's a correction on page seven. The very first paragraph, talking about pools, the last sentence says, "A 5,000 gallon pool is typically five feet in diameter."
Should be fifteen.
If that's the case, it would be thirty-four feet tall. I think that's supposed to be in depth.
I think it's fifteen foot diameter is what, I can verify that.
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah.
A 5,000 gallon pool, you know, it's, it's, it's not that. Because that, like I said, that's, if I ciphered correctly, that's a thirty-four foot deep pool.
That opens all kinds of.
That would be for high diving.
Kind of, yeah.
See what that's about.
It's pretty deep, yeah. I don't know what the pressure would be at the bottom of a thirty-four foot pool. Pretty intense.
Probably more than what those plastic pools can.
Yeah, unless you just bore a hole, I guess, and go straight down. All right, so.
About seventeen.
Minor, minor correction there. Okay. So can we?
You can approve with the correction.
All right, so then, yeah, I would, I would ask for a motion with John's request there to be corrected, to be made to the commission.
Actually, I think it's a test to see if we read them.
You listen.
I would use my dad even if I'd read it.
I, I stopped before I got to page seven.
Takes an engineer to make sure it's.
I'll move it.
All right.
Second.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion also passes. Thank you, John, for your detail there. Yeah, that's very good. All right, so our next item is item E, which is our public hearing section, so I'll make, make an announcement to the group here. We'll open the public hearing. Look for any comments from the audience, and if you do have anything to say, please approach the podium, state your name and address, and then we'll move forward with discussions and whatever you want to say. So we'll start with opening the public hearing for item one, which is a rezoning app, application for parcel ID 1007, 101, 027. So if anyone has any comments to make to the commission, now's the time to do that. Seeing none. All right.
God, the crowd.
It is rough. All right, so with that, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll go ahead and move to commission discussion. Paige, if you could just read through our agenda memo?
Yeah, this rezoning, as you can see on the zoning map, is a mixture of R1, R2, and R4. The proposal is to turn the entire parcel into R2, which would allow for a single-family, detached and single-family attached subdivision. And no public comments were received.
Were, okay, so a question I was curious about. So the current zoning map, was that part of the plan of survey originally, or just how did it evolve to be, because I know future use just says residential, right, kind of generically? Was there, like, a purposeful plan with the R4, R2, R1 at the time it was done? Does anybody know? Wes?
That was back when John Monahan did it. That was his concept plan, but that's not ours.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious. Thank you. Anything from public comments, Wes? Okay. Any other discussion?
Well, I mean, the only comment I'd have is that, you know, it's commercial up along the highway, along Bremer Avenue, and, you know, typically they try to do a transition from commercial to dense to less dense, but for the few lots that are in there, I don't see that that's an issue. You know, I think anything that would encourage somebody to come in and develop would be very good.
Well, that's what we had to do up farther east there, and that's why we did that, to take care of that back in the day. They put the trees, or the berm, I guess it was.
What's the name of that addition back then?
What's that?
What is the name of that addition?
Monahan addition.
Monahan's.
Yeah.
You're talking about along Viola.
Well, farther east there, we had, you know, we had the same commercials items there.
Yeah, if you flip your screen, and she's showing us. Right behind, like where Del Rio has stuff and whatever.
And yeah, that's on the residential properties that fit in the tree berm, I think.
There's no action that has to come out of the public hearing piece, is there?
Well, I mean, yes, you're still making a motion to either recommend approval or denial of the rezoning to council.
Yeah, yeah, we just.
Well, if there's no more, I would move Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the rezoning application for this parcel from combined R1, R4, R2 to consistent R2 to the city council.
I'll second that.
I think Kate beat you.
Exactly.
Oh, I didn't hear that, sorry.
Barely, yeah. All right, so we have a motion that's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, that motion passes.
Did you close the public hearing?
I did.
Oh, sorry. Dazed and confused.
No, it was brief. But thank you for asking. All right, item F, regular business. We have an item here to review a plan of survey for parcel ZZ, which, Paige, if you could step us through that, I'm a little.
Yeah, so back in February, a plan of survey was brought to you for parcel XX, which was parsing off a little piece from Baller Homes or Tate Nurseries there on the corner, with the intent that it would be sold to Corle, and then Corle would plot it together with their property to expand that driveway to make it easier access for their trucks. So that is what parcel ZZ is doing. It's now taking that prior approved small one and combining it with their larger lot.
That keeps zoning the same, and it just all kind of combines as it is as the larger lot?
Yeah, it's gonna stay. It's gonna have that weird zoning on there for a little bit. I probably should have had them go through the rezoning at the same time. Adding the driveway extension doesn't make a difference what zoning it is, but when they go to make any changes, we'll have them, because I think one is commercial and one might be industrial.
Hmm, okay.
And so, once they do other activity out there, we'll just have it rezone that little triangle to mix in with the rest of it.
So is the intent, and I know it doesn't really show on anything here, but is the intent that the driveway is the width of the front of that lot?
It has to be still at least five feet from the new property line. I know Justin McGowan has been working with the DOT on how wide that permit would be, because that permit comes through the DOT for widening it.
Okay. Okay. Other discussion questions from the commission?
I move that Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of a plan of survey for parcel ZZ located at 2203 East Bremer Avenue, Waverly, Iowa, to the city council.
Second.
All right, a motion that's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, that motion passes as well. All right, item two in our regular business is review of some amendments to the accessory building and breezeway requirements of city code. Think we're all familiar with the agenda memo. Is there anything different on this now?
I don't think there's probably much of anything different. The main difference I did is I added in a, there's two red line versions, one with the fence requirement and one without. I talked with a couple other people that are on some other boards and commissions to get kind of their thought on it, because as staff, the biggest struggle looking at the fencing is, does it make sense with some of these? And if so, what are your guidelines for when you need a fence versus not having a fence? Is that in the city's requirements to provide it, or is it the insurance company? Talking with others, they've recommended to get rid of the fencing. Obviously, it's not their decision either. It's still your guidance on what we recommend to city council. After our last meeting, we went and talked with the insurance commissioners. Is that what it was in the morning?
Yep.
Right?
And then reached out to the Excel Group.
And then the Excel Group to see. And it's kind of left up to their own insurance agents on what they require with fencing.
Did you get any feedback from insurance agents? Do most or all require it, or do they have anything about inflatable seasonals versus semi-permanent installations, or anything like that?
There were no state requirements from the Iowa Commission, Insurance Commission at all, but it depends on the carrier. So the Excel Group is a brokerage, that's why we reached out to them, because they deal with a lot of different carriers, and a lot of them would have just different requirements. They'd be similar, but it would either be like a locked gate or a hard pool cover, but it just really depended on which carrier you went with, so.
So what I'm hearing is there didn't seem to be consistency.
No. So it sounds like it has to be protected in one way, but depending on the pool and the location and the neighborhood, things like that, it would depend on which one best suited that case.
The only question I, you know, and I am, I'm kind of torn between them, but the one, the one with fence, if the language says a fence measuring at least five feet in height should be established around the perimeter of the swimming pool, if the yard is fenced, does that count, I assume? I assume it would.
And we can change that language. Yeah, I would say if it's enclosing, enclosing the entire yard, backyard where the pool's at, then yes, that would count.
I mean, I, I don't know how the commission would recommend, but if we do go with fence, I would say perimeter of the swimming pool or the yard, you know, but I'm kind of leaning toward leaving it up to the property owner and his insurance company.
And I mean, the reason why you think of that is, what if it is a lot on the outskirts of town? I mean, and then do you have to do it for pond kind of things? Like Whittington's out there, they have that pond or whatever on their yard. Is that different than a pool? We don't require fencing on that, should there be? I don't know, because once you get to nitty gritty trying to finalize something, it's hard, because there's so many different cases around town where it might make sense here to have a fence, maybe not in another spot.
Yeah, some of them are four foot, too.
Fences?
Yeah. And so it's pretty easy for a kid to.
Hop over.
Hop over. So that's why I struggled with that, you know, because I know there's some existing ones already that are just four foot, so. Yeah, I, I think it's difficult for a requirement to be in city code for the fence, because it's, it's kind of case by case. So I think it should be, the non-fence version is where I feel, from a code perspective only, we should be knowing that there's requirements on whatever you may have in your backyard. If you have a trampoline, do you need a fence? If you have a playset, do you need a fence? Your insurance company might say something, but as a city, I think we should kind of be, you know, land use is space. Fence requirements really isn't part of that. Sure, it applies in the code for certain reasons, but I think those reasons should be left up to the homeowner and not the.
If we approve the fence one, it's not retroactive, though. It's only moving forward.
Right.
The other thought I had, do your requirements are going to have it? Do you have, require them to have like a million dollar umbrella on their insurance? Is a possibility? I, that was one thought I had, that, you know, that you could, you know, if they're gonna have a pool, you require them to have a million dollar umbrella.
How do we?
Above their liability insurance to cover, you know, some issues.
Yeah, for a life loss, that's not enough.
Well, you can go.
And what if they get it and then they cancel it a week after they?
Yeah, I mean, how do you?
I don't know, that was just my thought I had. Yeah, I, I understand.
Yeah.
I, I keep reminding, like what Dave just said, it's a land use issue, and the really real what we're getting at is, does the pool count against the accessory building area? Do we let people put a pool in their backyard to occupy more space than a storage building or garage or something like that? And I think, to me, that was our, kind of our objective as far as safety and that kind of thing. Life safety code is not zoning. So that's building permit or, again, or life safety code. I don't think Waverly has got a life safety ordinance to it. I don't blame we do.
And I mean, on the permit, I think we would, if there's a pool, it's gonna always have the caveat, make sure you check with your insurance company on requirements.
Some of those, they build the deck, a huge deck around the hole.
Yeah.
There's one out there behind the daycare center by, most to me, there that, well, he's a policeman, and it's a pretty good sized deck that's level with the pool top, and it goes clear around.
My, my neighbor did the same thing. He's got a, in essence, an eight foot wide deck that's around roughly a third of the pool. It's big enough to have two lounge chairs up there, and you can jump off the edge. It's a four foot pool.
I'm trying to imagine if you were a parent and your kid went roaming around the neighborhood and something happened and was, let's, you know, hurting the pool. And then you have, what is your recourse for redemption, right? Do you sue the people because they didn't have a fence up?
And then I mean.
But if there's no fence requirement.
But like Dave said, if they have a trampoline, and that's not required to be fenced in or the place, and they.
So it's just your homeowner's liability insurance, basically?
Right.
I think there's some insurance companies that won't, won't.
Insure if you have one.
Ensure them. I've heard of that, too.
I'm just trying to think that, you know, a parent interest like that is gonna reach out in all sorts of different directions, and by virtue of the fact that this came across planning and zoning and potentially city council, and they said, we don't need it, it's the homeowner's choice. Does that put this city at a higher risk because they said we don't need it?
I don't think so, because you basically, we contacted the state insurance commissioner. There's nothing in there, and we've contacted a local insurance agency that brokers different companies. It's really whether they can get insurance or not, and they're gonna be required to have insurance if they have a mortgage. So it's, I don't know, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tough, and then let the courts figure it out. That's, that's really what it's gonna come down to, is that, you know, if somebody sues another person, it's gonna be the court.
Well, the question isn't if somebody sues another person, it's if someone decides to sue the city. And I don't think there are any cases thus far where someone has successfully sued a city for not having a pool ordinance. So, I mean, while that could change in the courts, so far, I don't think there's any examples, in Iowa at least.
I've never heard of one either.
Where people gone, successfully gone after the city for liability for not having a pool ordinance.
I have heard of them, you know, suing the neighbor because it wasn't secured.
Right.
Well, and I think Swingsham is a, is a good example.
Sure. And if we recommend approval of this to go to city council without fencing, I can run it by Alerson Fumi again and just verify our concern. Is, is there any liability on the city if something were to happen to somebody now that we've got this in the code without fencing requirements? I'm just gonna verify with them. If they're on board with how we're moving forward, we'll keep moving forward. If they say, nope, we need to change something, then I can bring it back to you guys again, but.
Years ago, Murphy Edition had a pool out there. It was nothing but, well, Kate built it out there, too. It was nothing but a headache, you know, because all of a sudden, in the middle of the night, you could hear that board banging, and they jumped the fence and, and.
And it was a high fence.
Yeah. And, yeah, we got rid of it.
Yeah, even a high fence didn't stop kids from jumping it.
No, uh-uh.
I wish it was, our pool was the same way.
I mean, I have to admit, I did it a few times with kids, but, yeah.
Just slow you down, though.
What's that?
Slow you down, though.
I mean, the lawsuit type things are, that I have heard of have been, you know, where a two or three year old wanders out of the backyard and falls in a pool.
Right, and that's generally.
You know, a two, a three foot fence or four foot fence would have stopped it, but that's, you know, then we, you know, you get into a whole lot of things like that.
I took care of that pool, and I, every morning, I went up to, I was always, I didn't want to.
Didn't want to be the first one there in the morning.
Find somebody in the pool dead, you know.
You're not making the case there for no fence, that story.
No, I know, but I mean, that's, that's, you know.
Well, again, I think our, our mandate is, does it go in the code or not? We're not saying it's required or non-required as a homeowner. We're just saying, from a code perspective, a pool doesn't dictate fence.
I think, I guess what I'm, I'm meaning is, is that really what we were trying to talk about is the swimming pool itself and its land use point. I think that that's what this was about, and we're growing it, you know, without it necessarily being the actual issue.
Well, and, and maybe to do a little bit of more due diligence is, is when somebody goes to get a building permit for a pool, that the building official says, have you checked with your insurance people? If they say yes, check that box.
Oh, that's a good, good.
Yeah.
That's a very good.
If they say we haven't yet, well, after you've done that, we'll give you the permit.
Then come back and check the box.
Then they sue you. No.
What's that?
Then they sue you. Yeah, it's a.
It's a tough one.
Well, I, I would make the motion to we move the Planning and Zoning, yeah, Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the amendments to the accessory building breezeway requirements, and it would be for the, referencing the clean version with no fencing.
I'll second that, unless some dailies already do.
No, we, we have a motion that's been moved and seconded. I have a very small John-type typo catch.
Good job.
I think it's the first sentence of any version. It says, well, excuse me, of the red lines or the clean, but if you look, it says, where it used to say, now it says front or yard. I believe that just means front yard.
Oh, yeah.
Because it used to say side.
Yeah, under A.
Yeah, it took you, is this in meetings to catch it?
Uh, sorry.
John, you developed your reputation.
It used to be front or side yard. We removed the side, but not the or.
So in a front yard.
Very minor, but. I did, did see that header in there, so I thought it was written up.
I missed that.
And the only.
Competition going now.
The only other minor thing, like above number three, you know, where it has that little footer, is that supposed to be there? Is that just a formality?
Yeah, that gets added in when they get amended. Administration does that.
Goes where it goes, or it goes.
I'm guessing that'll get dropped, and then a new one will get placed at the end. So in the clean version, we'll remove that, and I would imagine they'll put one at the very bottom.
Yeah, that's typically what I saw. So those are the only two things. Again, we have a motion moved and seconded. I would ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, that motion passes. Moving to item number three, under regular business. Discuss housing needs analysis in former Irving school sites.
Yeah, so first, thank you to those who were able to go to the study session. I was not able to, but I did watch back the discussion that was had. Cities, there are some specific questions that were asked by Brian Shuen with InterFog, and city staff are getting all the answers for those, but we wanted to get your thoughts on what are you guys comfortable with housing on here? I was not part of the discussions back, I believe in 2021, when it came throughout that time. It's owned R2 right now. Is that what you would prefer to see it as? Would you rather it go up to an R3 or an R4? Kind of what density are you guys comfortable with? And if you have any opinions on ideas for that?
I'll, I'll make one comment here. Out of all the years I've been on here, that one, I got the most phone calls on by the neighborhood, you know, just mixing those townhouses with the old style housing, and the people that live around the edge of that were concerned, that they thought, how about just some, you know, three or four lots there, and, and people could build a house that would fit into the neighborhood. But that was one of the ones I've had more calls on back in that, at that time, you know, and that would be the only thing I would say that I, I don't want to go through that again, you know.
After we have, well.
Self-preservation.
Yeah, but now we have a housing survey that says we need. But now we have a housing survey that says we need, you know, we need to do 130 units a year for the next 10 years. I questioned it a little bit, but, you know, we need, you know, 50 to 60 for sure, whether it's 130, I don't know. I think, you know, that needs analysis is pretty strong. I mean, I, I, I think it is. But, you know, that is an R2 zone. It's 70,000 square feet. And an R2 for single and two-family would say that, you know, you could put 10 units on there without any zoning change. Now, whether that fits in that goofy-shaped lot or not, that's another story. And I would hope that we would, you know, if someone came in and said, yeah, I'd love to develop 10 units, but I got to have a little bit more side yard or a little less side yard or something, that the Board of Adjustment would see that as a hardship, not speaking for Pete and his group, that, yeah, that would work. I guess, you know, my feeling is, is that, you know, something that knits into the R2-type zone and, you know, somewhere 10 units or less would certainly work. I think the thing that's going to be tough is to put seven, eight, 10 units in there and get the parking requirement, you know. The one comment I made about the presentation is, is the guy from InterFog, you know, a whole bunch of the questions he raised have already been answered, you know. I mean, it already went through a request for proposals thing and we got the, you know, I do remember that, too. I wasn't on the commission, but I was working, you know, for the city at that time and, and it was a little bloody, I agree. Those were not things that kind of fit into the neighborhood. But, you know, it, it is all out of the, it's in the 500-year floodplain. And I am pretty sure that Bill Werner went through the process of making sure there were no conditions on it, that it is in the 500-year and it can be built. You know, so you're looking at probably units that don't have basements because, you know, they're slab units and they've got to be a little bit above the grade. But I guess that's where I would be going, something that's compatible with R2. The key, though, is, is finding a developer and doing a deal. What does it take? You know, if a developer comes in and says, well, and I don't remember how many units it was back then.
I think it was 10, I think.
Was it just 10?
I think that, if I remember, I could go back and pull this stuff out.
I, you know, that was the question. I couldn't remember. But they were two-story and all that. And, you know, you're looking at, to me, the height requirements that are in there is, you know, basically kind of story and a half construction and that kind of thing. I mean, you do have a bunch of two-story houses all around it.
And that's kind of the question is, do you see this, I mean, our comp plan, too, we don't really have the townhomes anywhere in town. Our comp plan that we renewed, that's been a couple of years ago now, that says we want the different designs of housing mixed in with your neighborhood. So is this more of that transitional district, though, because it is right off of Bremer? Now, I don't think you want a bunch of tenplexes in there, but yeah, you kind of hit the key on, you're not going to have basements. So if you are going to do townhomes, R3 limits you to two stories. So you wouldn't be able to do much with.
But I mean, for goodness sake, we've got, well, on both sides of it, you've got two-story houses.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, the objection that was most prevalent in that last round had a lot to do with the fact that there was a fear of that density being, you know, filled up with college kids. I don't know that that.
That was one of them, yeah.
I mean, I think that architecturally, you know, I don't know why you couldn't put some limitations on the design of what happens there so that it is consistent with the design of the houses in the neighborhood. Yeah, they're mostly two-story or one-and-a-half story, you know, they are, they do have mostly a mid, turn of the last century kind of a look for the most part, although all of them don't. There's that one on the corner that's clearly a box.
It's a split foyer or something.
If you use an Iowa Finance Authority-type program, typically they require that the owner occupies it for five years. So there goes your initial problem with students.
Yeah, if they're going to use that workforce development funding type thing, yeah.
I mean, that.
And can you put something, when they go to develop them, whether they're in their covenants or your HOA or something like that, that you can put that they need the owner occupied?
Yeah, yeah. You can put in there that they're not, that you can't rent them. I mean, the density issue was definitely real last time. There was a lot of, they were pretty dense. I think there might have been more than 10 units, but.
Or it could be, I don't remember. For some, you know.
But I thought that they did, they made a lot of the right gestures of putting cars in the back and entrances on the front, you know.
So who do you see as a potential buyer or a person occupying that area?
Well, if the goal is, what's in the housing study is to try and keep the cost within a certain.
Try to stay under $300,000 a unit and, you know.
So are you seeing young families? Are you seeing 55-plus? Are you seeing?
I, yeah, I mean.
Who are you seeing as a?
I seem to remember the housing study had a lot of what they called the dinks, the double income, no kids. I think that's probably.
No, it could be, it could be.
And how many people are there really in Waverly of that?
Well, according to the study, that was one of the, the areas that we had, had need for.
That will be a higher population in the next 10.
I mean, and that, that can be people who haven't had kids yet. It can be people whose kids have moved off to college. So I mean, that's kind of.
Or it could be families that only have one kid, too, that are planning, you know. I mean, that's the kind of a, you know, we're looking at probably 11, 1200 square feet and, you know, that kind of a thing.
Well, I would say you're looking at people who don't want to mow a lawn, who want, you know, less yard space to take care of, people where that's not their goal.
I mean, think of a Anna Estates-type development for the general population that hopefully you can get for less than 400 grand.
Well, and that's going to be the struggle if you do the single-family detached, your price is going to be.
So, I mean, you're looking at probably twin homes, you know, something like that. But.
Is there any way that the city can plat this and make it be lots so that you can communicate to the public that we're, there's a density limit?
We, you can, but that would be more on the developer when it gets to that point. But you're going to have to have a purchase agreement when we would sell the land, so it can be in that agreement.
I mean, we're talking about giving the way in the way, aren't you?
Yeah, but you still have to enter into an agreement.
I mean, we went through the process to get rid of the lot lines.
Right, yeah, it was part of all this.
To make it a parcel that can be developed, you know, open, you know. Again, finding someone to do a deal, you know.
And like your Anna Estates, that is an R3. You can have the single-family and single-family attached in an R3 as a condolition, the cluster home development.
Well, and we, you know, they just started some of the, what's it called, Maple, Maple Hills up there?
Yep.
It used to be, I don't know who owns it now, it was Steve Dara. I don't know. It was still Crystal Plumbing digging the foundation, but they're starting to put in units up there. And those were, were either twin homes or, or detached, single-family. And, but they're small and they're slab houses, I believe. And, you know, that's the kind of a thing I think we're looking at. But again, it's finding somebody that's, that can do the deal and develop something at that, at that price point, you know.
These units that you have on the screen right now, this is the Anna Estates, right?
No, that's Eisenach.
Eisenach. You gotta go farther up.
Yeah, go farther up.
Anna Estates probably is not.
Eisenach, those are duplexes and fourplexes.
They are fourplexes?
Well, there's a couple duplexes. There are two duplexes there, too, clear on the west end.
But these are single, these are single-story, they're not even two-story units.
But you could, you could kick them up to a story and a half, so you could get, so that you could get a bedroom or two upstairs and still comply to code.
But that might limit your aging population take rate.
Yeah, I.
They're not necessarily shaped.
No, I agree. See, I, I questioned the whole housing study because I, I wonder what they did when they contacted Trust Age. You know, there's hardly anybody left out there and it's all work from home. If they're coming, all those employees is coming in from the outside, but really they're just staying at home. They aren't coming anymore. And I, I question whether that is a big chunk of the people that.
30 new.
What's that?
A year, you said?
What's that?
130 new units a year?
Yeah, 1,300 over the next 10 years.
See, and I think that's where part of this problem is, is.
The debt of, they're starting with this wrong.
Well, they had, yeah, I mean, they had 4,700 people commuting in to Waverly to work. Well, they didn't have distances and then O'Brien brought, brought that up about people.
Well, I, it would have been, I hadn't considered the telecommuters who like worked more than 50 miles, who actually don't commute.
Yeah, there are people that list here as employment, but they don't have to come to town.
Right, so.
Yeah, were those taken out of the numbers?
All those people who are commuting like, you know, 50 miles, you know, were they doing it via teleconferencing?
See, that's where I just question that whole.
And if they are, is it just sometimes it's only one or two days a week they're coming into office?
If they do have to come in, they have to come in like one day a week or something, exactly. So, that is.
So I, yeah, I don't know.
But, you know, Anna Estates are also, they're 1,500 to 1,900 square feet.
They're not big. And they aren't 300 or less, are they?
No, they're.
Anna Estates? No, they're four, 410.
Yeah.
Eisenach are in the 290 to 300.
You have to be over 55 there for Eisenach?
You have to be 55 for all of them. And have a dog that weighs less than 50 pounds.
If you have a dog, it has to weigh less than, you can move in without a dog.
Yeah, you can.
You don't have to have a dog.
If you have a dog, it has to be less than 50 pounds.
Okay, so kind of what I'm hearing is leave it as is or if anything, a cluster development, kind of like Anna Estates. But you're looking at.
I think the R2 is fine. I think that the piece of the issue with the neighbors, because I think R2 can be done right.
Yeah, I think.
I think that if you make it be R1, that.
I think that's.
Well, I think you're going to have an issue, one-car garage is what they had come with before. Parking was an issue, you know. Garage trucks have to back all the way.
So that's a design problem. That's, that's not.
But I'm just, those were the issues that came up.
I mean, the one neighbor that I know in that neighborhood, he just wants it left to be a green space. And, you know, I told, I told him, I said, that's not an option. You got to get used to this.
So when I did a kind of drawing out of the requirements in the R2, requires 65 by 100-foot lots. And so you could get six of them on there.
An R2? That's a pretty many. There's six lots facing this, seven, eight lots facing this.
So those six lots, is that two units on each lot? Or is that a single?
Well, I think.
6,500 square foot per unit.
And it's because of the triangle with that rear setback.
I mean, for attached.
So a lot of just extra green space with that.
For attached in an R2, you can get down to 3,500 square feet per unit. That would be 20 units, somewhere between there.
And single-family attached needs, yeah, 70 by 100 essentially. Because you're 35, 35.
I think it's a design problem. I don't think that it's a.
But I do think that there's, if a guy comes in with a proposal, we've got to be a little bit more generous with setbacks and things like that in this goofy-shaped lot.
That's, yeah, the lot, it's just.
I think there's going to be, developers are going to be concerned about, are you going to back me if?
That's, I think.
Exactly, that's, that's the concern I think you're going to find with any developer.
They're going to spend, you know, 10 grand doing some preliminary planning and putting them together. They got to think that the city is going to support it. And I think we need this. I think the commission needs to say, yes, we'll support that kind of development. Do we want to see a 20-unit box multi? No. At least I don't.
Well, something like that would be an R4, correct?
Yeah, and I don't, you know.
I mean, so, I mean, we can kind of say, we're not interested in an R4. We, we can say, you know, R3, maybe you can convince us, but we want an R2 as our preference, so.
I just, yeah, don't need a motion or anything like that tonight. It's just kind of more of a discussion as we bring it back to staff and then we'll have another discussion maybe towards the end of April at town hall.
And I'm sorry to get seasick with this picture, but.
And she's moving it? They must have been on our.
And you're just shopping around over there.
It's driving me crazy that I can't drive.
I got my own Google Earth up, so I can like, you know, drive around.
Well, wasn't the other thing, too, you know, since there's only one-car garage and if they had two cars, the parking, we were going to have to figure out how to do the parking in front.
I still feel like it's a design problem.
I agree.
But I'm just saying, with the issues that came up.
Were there issues to the.
I think, I think the issues were that a lot of people had in their mind that we could put single-family houses in there that people could buy for $150,000. And I think we needed to be clear that that wasn't an option. And I think that.
It's not going to work.
Right, exactly. It, it was an education thing. I mean, I think, like, there are lots of people who thought, we want houses that look like the houses that are there. And we could not.
Well, you can't build those for $150,000.
Exactly, exactly. And, I mean, and to be fair, this was brought up just before the last election when there was a lot of people who were, we had like, you know, Troy Collins and people who were saying like, we need less government and government is non-responsive. So the city council felt the obligation to really listen to the complaints of the local people, because if we didn't, then we would have been lambasted for it. So I think it was a question of poor timing for that to be coming up, given that there was, let's say, a slate of nut jobs who were applying for city council jobs. And we had to kind of, you know.
You know, and if you go up to First Home Edition, you know, there's 1,100 square foot houses with single-car garages. If they got two cars, one goes out on the street.
They park in the driveway behind the garage.
Yeah, I mean, that's the way it goes. And I think, you know.
We're a very privileged lot.
Yeah.
We've, we've evolved into something that's, you know, if it doesn't have two-and-a-half bathrooms and three-car garage and, you know.
I'm kind of imagining that you've got those sharp corners at either end that could kind of be used for excess parking. You could put like a little parking lot at each corner where it's like, you get, if you have a second car, you can find a place to put it there.
And those.
Or even, yeah, but back to the lots.
It's Kansas City, and those are design issues.
Tumble-covered garages, separate.
Okay, you're a designer, unless you're.
It's an attempting exercise.
No, I, I agree.
If I didn't have a full-time job. If it didn't include this.
Okay.
Garages are required, are they?
Garages aren't required, no. Just off-street parking is, I think, your single-family. Is there only two off-street parking spots? I'd have to verify, but there is an off-street parking requirement.
I mean, if it's for any other dead-slick city, this wouldn't even be a discussion. It would be, you could put a carport in the back.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, a detached.
And all of the cars park underneath the, the car thing with solar panels on top of it. You know, but this is not, yeah. So you have to sell that at a different.
It's a solar panels thing, a sales pitch, I think, brings them in.
Okay.
All right. All right, so we're going to leave it as R2 would be our summary of that discussion. RMG, any staff updates?
I do not have any updates.
You kind of mentioned one earlier, but the Doug is.
Oh.
His term is over in.
Doug's term is up, name one, and he's not renewing. So, we do have an application that I believe the mayor's moving forward with, that'll probably be appointed April 21st to start in May or whatever our next meeting is.
Anything else? No, clear. All right, commission updates next. The only thing I was going to say is just, I was going to acknowledge Doug's service. I know he's not here tonight and my appreciation for the time he was chairperson, the time he was on the commission, I had sent him an email separately, so I just wanted to acknowledge his service and my appreciation for it. That is all I had, unless anybody else had anything for that section. All right, moves us to agenda item I.
I moved it, we adjourned.
We are adjourned.